Good.
Okay, I'm recording to the cloud. Okay.
Oh, thank you, John. You have to thank Johnny got us back.
All right.
He says another hundred dollars.
All right, everybody, welcome. I'd like to welcome participants to the virtual planning board meeting of November ninth. There'll be a short period on our agenda where participants online can ask questions and make comments through the chat window and participants on the phone can voice their desire to speak. Please state your name when recognized. If for some reason you're not able called to speak, please remind the chairman you wish to speak. I'd like to now take a call of order for the members of the planning board to make sure we have a quorum. Mr. Coons. Ms. Delicio.
President.
Ms. Foley.
President.
Mr. Gilbert.
President.
Mr. Olney.
President.
Mr. Russell.
Here. Mr. Coons.
Okay, got you. Like first item on the agenda is acknowledgement, acknowledgement receipt of correspondence. We got an MECT letter, a letter from Ms. Gerch from Essex on developments, and two emails from Ms. Ayavani. The board acknowledges receipt of this correspondence, a reminder that 40B letters should be primarily addressed to the ZBA, not the planning board. The planning board's purview is that of an advisory role under 40B. The ZBA and the Board of Selectmen will do, will do the read, the real detailed review and will hire peer reviewers.
Ron, can we just make sure that these letters get written in for the date? Subject. Resident.
I assume Helene does that. Sure.
Are we going to discuss content on any of them?
No, it's not my plan to unless there's a motion. Are you making a motion to discuss content?
Yes.
There's a motion to discuss content of these letters. Is there a second? No, second motion fails. Next item. I will allow a few minutes for any public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Okay, with that being said, the next item up is Surf Village drainage issue. Attorney Russ Brown, I assume, is online. But in summary, I just would like to say the original plan was not executed because of the contractor had found ledge. When it was found, the stormwater system put in place was inadequate. An alternative was considered. In the end, they got rid of the small capacity holding tanks and they enlarged the retention pond that will hold more water adequate for the site and control the release. We, I had, I looked at it myself and I had Chuck Dam look at it. Chuck Bam's response, they were all good on their end. And the revised pond is better than the initial pond. So it seems everything they were looking for is fine. So with that in mind, I'm making a motion unless Mr. Brown would like to speak on behalf of his client.
No, I have no comment. I think he summed it up and all the engineers have reviewed it. So I don't think I would have any input of note.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept the plan. Is there a second?
Second, Ron.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Coons.
Except.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yeah.
Mr. Olney.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Brown, your motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, board members. Much appreciated.
Okay, next item is the approval of the local initiative program minutes that Sue Brown revised based on our conversations last meeting. They've been passed on to the Board of Selectmen. At this point, I would just like to make the motion that we accept the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Weren't these Helene's minutes?
The ones in the packets that I sent were mine.
I'm talking about the LIP minutes. These were Sue Brown's minutes on community benefits.
That's not on.
Utilities. These are the things we went over last meeting and were updated. That's what I'm talking about here. So any discussion on this?
I think they're noted as Helene's minutes, Ron.
Okay, the agenda says, are you, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
The agenda says approval of regular minutes October 13 parentheses. LIP capture of boards comments and concerns and parentheses and October 26th ready.
So these are the minutes I'm talking about and correct me if I'm wrong, but these are the ones that we're approving. Am I correct or am I in error here?
I think if you look at it, Ron, it says minutes and the person who prepared it, it says Helene. So I just were confused.
Who prepared these LIP minutes, Sue? Was it you?
I don't have those in front of me. I would characterize mine, what I took not as minutes, but as the board's consensus of what to pass on to the Board of Selectmen. So maybe just calling them minutes is maybe not what you want to do.
Okay, what I would, then maybe I'm in error. Maybe there are additional October 13 minutes?
There are. They have the big, the big, big, big paragraph in the front that, that you and starts with Mr. Master Giacomo, welcome participants of the virtual planning board meeting and reported as follows. Those are the ones that I did. Those are all the minutes that we had, they were deferred to this meeting. October 13.
So, Ron, I think we agreed to have two, two sets of documents, one that Sue passed on, and these are the actual minutes from the meeting.
Okay, so I'm in error here. These minutes of the LIP have already been passed on. So the October 13 minutes, has anybody reviewed them? Are there any comments on them? Because I was confused.
I have reviewed them. I, I think I said at last meeting, I thought they were great. They were very thorough. They captured what we said. Helene's minutes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes of October 13th. Or I'm making a motion. Is it seconded?
Second.
Okay, on any discussion? On the approval of the October 13 minutes, Mr. Coons.
I'm sorry, Ron, I just have a quick question. Do you know when the Board of Selectmen met to come up with these questions? That was my, I'm sorry, I was muted there for a second.
The question on when they.
The questions that were presented to us.
I would say three or four weeks ago, Sue, or maybe Becky, can you answer that question?
I was, I was not at a Board of Selectmen meeting when they were discussed, so I cannot answer the question.
I guess I'm confused. I'm sorry, Ron, this is Becky. I'm confused as to how this pertains to the approval of your minutes.
I was just sure. I was questioning if it was factual that was in the minutes.
So do you all not review your minutes before the meetings then?
They should be.
I have, and I guess that's why I'm asking the question.
Right, but typically minutes are reviewed and comments are made prior to a meeting. Anyway, I do not have the exact date in front of me as to when those were done.
Any further discussion on them? There's a motion's been made to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Coons on approval of the minutes. Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Olney.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Yes.
Okay, minutes have been made and approved on the October 26 minutes. In consideration of the board's time, I'm asking that all comments to meeting minutes be submitted in writing so they can be distributed by Helene three days, three full days before the meeting. They'll be distributed to the board and I would limit discussion to only those written comments in the future. So I'd like to have all comments received three days before our next meeting for the October 26 meeting minutes.
So do we have a date that we're going to receive them by?
You have them.
No, I'm just saying in the future. Is this a policy that you would like to implement? Going forward?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, so is there a date that we will receive them by as a board? I understand that you want them three days before, but when will we receive them?
Well, you can probably get them three days before. Usually you can't. Depends on how much you want me to write.
Again, we requested that these minutes be minimal. Just, just.
I'm happy to submit them on Friday before the meeting. So that doesn't give them the whole three days unless they read them right away. You want them Thursday before the meeting? How about that?
Yes.
Thursday before the meeting. Okay, right.
Okay. Town planner report, Ms. Brown.
I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Brown on the town planner report?
I mean, I think we, there's a lot going on. I thought we would get a little more of a summary than just questions, maybe.
You want me, do you want me to go through what I wrote and kind of?
We haven't heard anything from the Affordable Housing Trust and the M A H T. So if you could talk on that.
Sure, I would love to. So the Affordable Housing Trust and the Manchester Housing Authority met last week. On Thursday, they had a, an update from the consultant. And let me just get in front of me. Did I include in that update what their initial thoughts were on the number of units that they could provide?
Yes.
Okay, so as you can see, they primarily they're looking at improving what is there. So the project would improve what exists. And then on each site, they found room and a way to add more units. At the, so what's listed there is the number of units that they can think. So now what the consultant team will do is they will model using that, those number of units, they'll model the financials and to see if it's fiscally or financially feasible. They'll also look at zoning and all the regulatory things to make sure that it's doable from that perspective. So they're going to look at things like, can they use low income housing tax credits? Can they, you know, they'll look at all the various programs and try to come up with a recommendation that says here is the best path for moving forward. If the, if the financials don't work, then we'll know that and we can either adjust the numbers or adjust some other assumption. For example, right now we're looking at all affordable units on the Manchester Housing Authority sites. So, so they're not looking to put any market rates on those, but they're looking at using the DP, the existing DPW site for market rate houses, but bundling them such a way that the developer would do all of the projects. And I do want to stress that it, it's not, that town is not offering the site free of charge. So that's just a caveat. So they need to put in all those assumptions and see what it comes out with in terms of financial feasibility.
So I guess I'm wondering, how did that site get put on the table for the redevelopment?
The DPW site?
Mm-hmm.
It was a discussion amongst amongst Greg and myself and like I said, it's, it's a study. So there's no guarantee that it will get on there, but we've thought that all along that that housing makes sense there and to see if we can improve the opportunity to create or to improve the housing authority sites and come up with a sustainable funding source and operating framework. And it might be doable with something with more market rate units.
I guess, yeah, I underst, I understood the, the ideas behind it, which makes a lot of sense. I guess for me right now, we keep, are going down a huge path of housing, housing, housing. And we definitely need fields almost with, now we're talking what, 200 plus units? And the need for playing fields is going to increase. I mean, our needs for other things are still there. So where's that planning part coming in?
Definitely. So I, I definitely, I agree, Christine, that we definitely need playing fields and I think that we are on the look for those, those opportunities as well. I'm not sure that it would be good on the DPW sites, the existing DPW site. I think we looked at it briefly or the, I think the Fields Committee looked at it briefly. And actually, I don't, I don't recall what their recommendation was on.
I actually thought that that was one of the sites where it was encouraged. That's what has me a bit concerned.
I have to, I have to double check that.
So I, I guess we are the planning board. So where, what point were we going to be asked to come in or do we just step ourselves in that there's too much housing and we're still going to be short on fields? We're still going to be short on other situations? Like where's the holistic view of all this happening?
So it's certainly happening in my office because I am always looking for those opportunities. You can't, you can't have, you can't just look at one thing. So, you know, the preservation, the recreation, the public facilities. My office definitely looks at all of those.
It seems like there's just a big push for housing right now and we're not really concerned with commercial tax base and the LCD. I guess we're, we're just going to have a lot more people and a lot less services was what I'm just on first.
Well, the 40R is very, very much about commercial. The particular program that we're looking at says it has to be at least half housing, but it's definitely always been considered to be heavy on the commercial. In fact, the reason that it's, it looks attractive as a 40R with the residential component is because we know that one of the commercial uses, the assisted living type facility, which is commercial and housing would fit, would fill the requirement for housing. So we learned that early on. So while it does provide housing, it is also a commercial use and has a commercial component. So there's, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any public facility or public service that we're not looking at and for. We've also, you know, had initial conversations about the possibility of a field space in any of these. So those are all on the table and all part of the discussion. So I, I do think when a, when a 150 unit apartment comes in, I don't think we stop all our other planning and say that goes down the hill. We've been looking at the Manchester Housing Authority sites for over three years and trying to figure out how to, how to get those to work. So we still think integrating housing in the neighborhoods.
No, I, no, I don't, don't take me wrong. I do think that's a great idea. I think that development is a great idea. I just want to make sure that we're being thoughtful of the other few spaces that we do have left for things that we desperately need already.
Yeah, yeah. I, I actually had a conversation today about a possibility of a site and checking it out to see if it might be usable for field space. So, you know, these conversations and I am constantly looking for these. I assure you.
No, but I guess then maybe you need to like maybe parlay these a little more because, I mean, as a resident, I have these conversations and people are concerned. I mean, we've been concerned about fields. The field space got delayed this year in the vote. So, I mean, and then we're talking about more people, more housing, more children, more need for fields. So, and we're still still where we are. So I guess at what point the fields and some other things take priority over more housing?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure when they take priority. Sometimes it's when opportunities arise, but I am also, you know, if someone's looking at fields and feels that that's a strong priority, I am happy to, I'm happy to have those discussions. I have looked multiple places and I'm continuing to look. So it's, it's, it's definitely not something I'm not in favor of. I'm very much in favor of finding additional field space.
Ron, this is Mary. Can I make a couple of comments on this housing opportunity? I have always been for the, the senior housing and making sure that gets updated and adding additional housing. I do think that we have to, as a town, look very closely that we've got another proposal now for 30 affordable units, but in exchange for 30 market rate units. And this proposal is 90,000 square feet on town owned land with renting out parking spots. And I think that, you know, per Christine's promise that I know that, that they would probably have to clear into the forest to make more space for this. The DPW site is only so big. I was looking on the town website for the report, the study that happened, I don't know, a year or two ago that said the DPW site was not suitable for housing. So I would like to find that report if I could. So maybe Sue could send a link to us. But I think, yes, it's important for the board and for other committees and boards to discuss the housing component and everything else that's going on in town that we might be tipping, we might be tipping on all of this.
So, so I think, Ron, may I just, for a moment? And one thing to keep in mind is that the Manchester Housing Authority sites provide housing for people with very limited income and it is not at all the same subsidy that, that you will find in the 40B, which is up to 80% AMI. So it is a very different type of housing and meets a very, very different need. So I would, I think we really need, people need to understand the level of need and also what the two, the difference between the housing that's going to be offered or that may be offered at the, at the sanctuary and at the Manchester Housing Authority sites. But they are just, they're very different housing needs.
I don't, I, I'm very aware of that. I guess I'm just aware that we also need other things in town.
Okay, so let's move on. This is the town planner report. We're kind of getting sidetracked on housing where any other, Sue, can you finish up on your report?
Or like, like I said, I'm happy to, whatever anybody wants to discuss on that. We're still moving ahead with the preservation effort in the Western Woods. We haven't, my next step is to create a a webpage so we can, so we can start putting out information about just what the plan is. You know, the 40R is, is moving along. We did just get additional funding from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to do phase two, which is the writing of the regulations. So we're pleased to get that additional funding. The cemetery is, go ahead.
Could you update us on the wastewater treatment facility study?
Yeah, I would love to update you, but that one's going probably the slowest of them because it involves some very early conversations with the sewer.
Alphatic Sewer District.
District, yeah. So they, they have had an initial conversation and they didn't get a no, we're not talking about it. So we take that as a positive sign. So while they're waiting for the next meeting, the consultant is doing the technical capacity so that they, if we do get a yes, let's talk about it. We'll know, we'll be, we'll be able to say what are the flows and all that, and all the type of technical questions. So that's the type of work the consultants are doing now. If, if you want a more technical response on that, I would have to ask Nate or Chuck to to provide what kind of data they're collecting, et cetera. I'm at the high level on this one.
Sue, I have a question about the 40R.
Yeah.
Has anybody sketched out sort of a cross section of possible land uses there or, and also on the housing? Is there ever, has there been discussions as to what possible breakdowns of different types of housing might be considered? Or is it still too early for even that?
No, no, it's not too early. In fact, that is what the consultants are doing right now. So I don't, I don't have anything from them, but I would expect it within a couple of weeks. So what the next thing that we would expect from them is a diagram that lays out what are expected uses, the general area that they might see them occurring in, how they can be developed into a community. The intensity of those uses. So how much housing, how much commercial and how they interact. So it'll be in a loose, probably, you know, very schematic plan at first. And then as we go back and forth about the intensity, the amount, how it's, how it creates revenue, what creates more revenue. Then it will tighten up, but it'll be an iterative process back and forth as we go through that. So, but that's the next thing that we, that we will be getting.
And do we, in, is that something the 40R study group is going to be doing back and forth with? Or at what point do we get to see it and maybe make some comments?
Yeah, so the step, this, the, the steering committee is just a, is just a group that to get the word out. So they're not reviewing anything that you're not reviewing. Anything that comes to me goes out to all the board. So, and once we get that, our intent is to have a multi, another multi-board a meeting so we can all talk about it together and go back and forth. So it's not in a kind of, it's, we're not planning in silos because it's really important for for everyone to kind of have their say at this, you know, at this early stage where we're looking at the types of uses and the income and.
So December before Christmas kind of thing?
I think we'll, I think we'll see something, yes, before then.
Okay, thanks.
So what are the, what are the LCD results that were posted on the website?
So what was posted on the website were the responses to the survey. So they had a survey up for about, I don't, maybe almost a month, maybe not quite a month. So there were 140, 150 responses. So they posted those survey responses as well as, you know, the summary of the responses as well as all the comments. And just like when we were doing our master plan, there are a lot of comments. So there's a lot of information to pour through there if anyone has the appetite for it.
Oh, yeah. I didn't see, but I'll look again.
And I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I had questions on different topic.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I believe.
I, I guess was hoping that some of these things would still be CC'd back to the planning board. I guess this is the first I'm hearing about that, the results that were posted.
I think that, did I not send that to the, to the board?
No, it's a good point, Christine. Well, we haven't seen anything. So I just happened to stumble upon them.
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to send that along and I apologize if I didn't. I maybe sent it to the, to the members of the steering committee or the working group and perhaps maybe didn't send it to the boards. I will, I will double check on that. I thought, I thought I had sent that along.
It would have been, it probably, it would have been a link, I think.
No.
No, we didn't get it.
No, I don't think we got one.
I will send it out.
Yep.
Excuse me, Ron.
Yes, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, just very quickly, the conversation about playing fields, encourage all of us and your friends and neighbors to complete the community survey for the open space and recreation plan. for the open space and recreation plan, open until the end of November.
Where is that located, Gary?
Uh, it's posted on the website and it's also in the planner's report with a link that you can click on if you have, if you're opening the Word document, not a PDF.
Okay, thank you.
So I feel like we just did one. Is this different?
It is. The first one was just a very, very high level and this is very, this is a lot more in-depth.
Okay. I guess I have one final question. So we're talking about a bit about sewage and I've asked a few times about what our water capacity is. So can you look into that and maybe report back on that next time?
Sure, I think that, I think Greg had that in in a recent update. And I I know that he and Chuck worked on some numbers. So I will, I will get that. And yeah, I'm happy to put that in our next, in my next report.
Thank you, Sue.
Ron, I have a few questions on the report still.
Okay.
So looking at the ADA self-assessment and the project funding grant. So I'll just say my few questions and I guess you can respond. I know there was a fifty thousand grant for the assessment. I'm wondering why we didn't go through the three federal program on the ADA. And then with regards to the funding grant, I could not find this on the website and curious if it's out there. And it's a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand. Are you, I would anticipate that there's need, additional tax dollars needed for that. Is that true or not true?
It is true. Yeah, so I'm I'm not sure what your question was in the first about free.
Well, there's a federal program for ADA assessments. I'm just wondering why we didn't go that route.
Um, we did get free money. We got it from the state, which gets it, which gets it from the federal agency. So it's probably.
Not free money. It's everybody's taxpayer money, but it's not that they.
No, 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 no. It was a grant. There was no, there was no town funding for that study.
No, Andrew, I I'm just making the point that grants are still taxpayer money.
As our, as our federal funds.
Yeah. So I'll do more, I I'll do more looking into that because I just don't know why we went through the route that we did. Is the, is this new hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant out on the website yet?
It is.
What's it titled? Oh, I didn't see it.
It is called, I think it's called the ADA Funding. Hold on and I'll look for it. It's there. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars the grant was put in for to basically create an accessible route to the police station, but also to to do some other smaller building accessibility improvements at the other public safety buildings, so the fire department as well as the police station. But the large, the largest amount would probably would be a a platform that connects the existing town hall entrance to the police entrance.
How does this stuff, Mary, how does this financing relate to the planning board? How do you see a connection?
Well, I'm just reading her town planner report.
But how does it affect the planning board? I'm asking you.
Well, we reviewed the ADA documents, so I thought all ADA was, I mean, it's in the update. I guess I'm, are we not supposed to ask questions on the report?
Oh, I mean, things that are germane to the planning board, I would say yes. But if they really, you know, if it's financing, I think that's another committee. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but I'm, I don't think it's in our purview.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know why the planning board would care where the money, the free, the money came from, as long as it wasn't coming from the taxpayers of Manchester. But.
Okay, I'll move on to housing production plan then. So we have the full housing production plan. I know we got it in section. So we did sections one through five to review. We did that and now we're slated to re-review the last sections. I do have some concern that there has been changes in the sections one to five and I don't have that change document. I can't get the track of changes. So I'm wondering if we can ask the consultant for that. Because I don't, I mean, then we're going back to page one again on a hundred-plus-page document. So can the consultant provide that of what was changed in sections one to five for easier review?
I will check with her and see if she did that.
Well, your email said that she doesn't work that way. So I'm just trying to see how we can get that as as, you know, a supplement to the document.
Right, when she did, when she sent the first five, it was basically a working draft and it wasn't something that we thought would need to be, we need to track the changes as we're working that out. She may be able to do that. So I can ask her if there is it. I'm not sure why it's critically important, but.
The housing production plan is not on our agenda. So I mean, why?
It's in the planner's report.
Okay.
So then I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer questions. I I guess.
I don't want to go off so much off topic, off the agenda. I mean, maybe you can email her, you know, questions that are, you know, personal to, you can email Sue separately. I'm trying to, you know, consider the board's time and I'd like to move on.
I agree.
Any any comments from the board on that?
I guess when we're trying to review documents and we're asked to review, I think it is pertinent that we are given track changes. So we, it is considerable of our time.
I'm asking the board if we'd like to move on.
You asked for comments, Ron.
I suggest we move on, but I I would say that track comments are not a requirement for early drafts. I think that is only necessary when we've entered into a detailed review of a final draft with public comment. Prior to that, it's a working document. Just work through it.
And also, I think that if Mary has issues with the way the housing production plan is being redrafted, that she can contact Sue directly and ask the questions.
Agree. Any other comments on the Town Planner Report? I'm moving on. Okay, the LCD study group update. So I'd like to inform the board that Gary Gilbert has resigned from that study group. So I'm looking at, I I see three options going forward. I, number one, we can ask for another volunteer from the board to sit on the committee. Number two, we could continue with only one planning board member on the committee. Or with all that's on his plate and one that I, with all that's on our plate and what I would advocate is that we postpone moving ahead with this group to a later date. So I'd just like to open this up for discussion and get a consensus from the board. Any comments?
Uh, Ron, I'll comment. Yeah, actually, I think I agree with pushing it out to a later date because I actually think it'd be more valuable to push it to a little bit later after we've gotten further along with our forty R anyway. Because we're already working through a lot of questions about that general area as we work through forty R. And I I realize the purpose of the LCD study group is slightly separate, but I think it would actually be beneficial, less confusing, if we set it aside for a while. So I support that idea.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ron, I do, when is this supposed to be? When we anticipated to vote on this for a town meeting? In the spring?
Vote on what now?
The forty, the forty R.
Uh, it's a process. I I think the idea is the spring. I mean, but it is a process.
So I guess if that's the case and knowing how long things take us, I mean, is it realistic to push this out? Or are we just trying to push this out not to do it?
We're pushing it out. I I, based on Mr. Russell's comments, I think we'll be better informed than at a later date. I think, I I like, you know, I think that has traction. And that's my opinion, but I'm looking for other opinions on the board. You'd like to do it early and continue? That's, you know, fine.
I personally didn't volunteer, but I think to have more information earlier on is more beneficial than waiting and running out of time and trying to do something rushed.
You've said that. Any other, any other comments?
Yes, this is Mary. We voted on this as a board to move forward with the study group. I think it's very important. You laid out last meeting what what this group is to study, environmental, social, and economic goals for the LCD. That's very much in line with the planning process. You don't, you kind of lead and move along with these goals. You don't retrofit them back in. I think there's some outside factors attributing to wanting to push this off. But I think it's very important that the planning board move forward with this as as voted and as scheduled.
Any other comments from any board, other board members who haven't spoken already?
I think what Gary Russell said makes some sense.
Okay, I'm looking to hear from Mr. Olney or Mr. Russ, Mr. Coons, any comments? Looks like we're.
I guess I, I guess I agree with Gary Russell. I think he made a good point.
Oh, it sounds like.
Why did we change our mind in two weeks? What's changed?
Well, Mr. Gilbert resigned. We had two members that we, we voted that we'd have two members and now we have one member. So things have changed. That's why.
That's fine. I can move forward on my own with it. I feel confident sharing that with the other members that are already on.
Okay, understood. So I have four members who wish to postpone, two members that are ready to to continue proceed.
So we're going to re-vote on a vote? Why don't we just get another planning board member or just say one planning board member?
Well, I I I mentioned, Mary, I mentioned three options and the the majority of the board wants to move, postpone it. Is that, are we going against what the majority of the board wants? Is that correct? Is that what you're advocating?
So I'm confused. One person resigns and we change our minds. I'm I'm just a little unclear of why.
Well, you, what, would you like to make a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
I'm just trying to follow the logic.
Make a motion.
One person had a conflict. Now we're re-talking about a committee that we already established.
So is there, do you have a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. We have an agreement that we were going to have a committee. We we voted on it two weeks ago.
Um, if I may, Ron, I I think the unspoken here is that the the agreement to have the committee was based partly on the members participating. And so now that that has changed, along with the realization or the reality of all the work we have to get through with the other things we're working on, I I think it makes more sense to push it off and I'm happy to make that motion.
I have to say, I respectfully disagree with that. It was just whoever wanted from the planning board who wanted to be on it. It could have been one person. It could have been three people. Um, I, it's concerning when rules change midstream and, you know, have the other members been notified to see their availability, the ZBA assessors, FinCom? Are they, they're still all good, right?
Oh, I have a motion from Mr. Russell that we postponed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm concerned about the background on this, that this is happening. That, and I'd like that in public comment, please.
Okay. Duly noted. On the motion to postpone the LCD study study group to a later date, we'll vote. Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
Ms. Foley?
No.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. So we'll postpone the LCD study group to a better time when things are known better with the forty R. Thank you.
Ron, may I make a comment on that?
We've, we've, we voted and decided on it. We had it, I had it open for discussion a few minutes ago. We're, we're moving on.
I'll put it in writing. Thank you.
Okay, planning board website. It came to my attention last week that wording describing the planning board responsibilities on the town website has has been changed. The new description removed references that the planning board uses the master plan as its mission statement. It's my understanding that this change was initiated by a planning board member without input from the board. This behavior is in direct opposition to transparency that we are striving for. With this in mind, I'm making a motion directing that the original language be restored. Is it seconded?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
What is the original language?
So I was, I guess.
Hold on, hold on. There's one question at a time here. What is the original language? The town's twenty nineteen comprehensive master plan serves as a guide for the town as it manages and proves existing access, preserves character and natural resources, and directs future growth. The plan informs our priorities for how the town spends taxpayer money to provide facilities, services, and support for our community. The master plan will be integrated into decision-making progress to ensure all policy, project, and budgeting decisions align with the priorities identified by the community. The two thousand nineteen master plan's guiding principles are the product of community input provided by over two years of public meetings, working groups, forums, and surveys. Responsible balance, the the cost and of this necessary infrastructure and facility improvements and maintenance, and the provision of desired services with funding sources that exist or can be developed. Preserve Manchester's small-town character and natural environment by recommending growth of the size, type, and the density with the community and only in the areas determined to be appropriate. So that's most of it. I don't want to continue to read the whole thing. But anyway, I have a motion to restore the original language. It's been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
So, Ron, I don't think that was the original language. The original language is what was there. Someone altered the language without discussion of the planning board. So I think there needs to be some kind of a policy or procedure for what's going to be put out there on our behalf. So I don't know what happened, but that was not, I have a copy of the original language and the original language is what it says now. So sometime it was changed. So we need to take a little bit of control and responsibility for this ourselves. So I'm trying to get some policies and procedures in place, but we don't have a lot. So I I don't think that the wording and the approach and the harshness.
So you're saying, you're saying that the the, there was no change in the description of the, on what was on the website. No one made any changes.
No, someone, what do you mean? Our original website.
What are you saying?
That our website looks like.
I just read you what the original, what what was.
No, that's after someone had touched it. That is not what it looked like a year ago. So someone is changing it. I thought we are supposed to approve it and that's not.
The only people that can change it are through the IT person at the town. So I, we could question the IT person as to how it was changed and who made the changes. Who was, so we can do that if you'd like.
Ron, Ron.
My, my, my question is, we have a motion to put back that original language and it's been seconded and you're saying that's not the original language.
I do not believe it is, Ron.
Okay. Ron, can I, can I clarify?
Yes.
This is Sue. So the original language, well, I guess originally you would have to say when, whenever it was first put up. I'm not sure of the date, but when we, when the town created its new website, all the department heads were asked. all the department heads were asked to update the, the board, the websites at that time. So this was sometime last year, I think, or early in this year. So at before, at that time, the, the planning board's website referenced its 20, whatever its last master plan was. I changed it to the principles, the guiding principles of the first of the new master plan. That's the only change that was made and included language that was taken directly from the master plan entrance. So the, the master plan introduction that was written and approved by planning board members. So I think Ms. Delicio is correct in that it had been changed at some point this year. I did not go to the planning board to change that. In fact, because I never had in all my time, six years of updating plans and websites. That's part of my job. So it had changed from the 20, whatever the last master plan was, to reflect the current master plan. And then, and then it was changed to, to delete any reference to the master plan. So I hope that helps.
So Ron, I don't believe your motion is correct. So I, there's no policy, there's no procedure on what is there, what's reviewed. So if we need to talk about it and talk about that in a civilized manner as a board going forward, I think we should do that, but claiming falsehoods of what was here and what wasn't there when we don't know that isn't productive right now. If we would like to review something and have it ready for the next meeting and we can vote on it as a board, what we should have on the website, maybe that's how to go forward, but I, I don't understand what exactly we're trying.
Are you making, are you making a motion? First off, there's a motion on the, on the floor that that we restored the original wording that.
This is the original wording. This is the original wording.
With due respect.
I think it is not.
I'd like to restore the original wording that Sue had added. That's my motion. What I read, what I just read. That's my motion to restore that wording and it's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I would like a policy and procedure on how to address changes to our webpage.
I think the selectmen are creating one.
And until then.
And I think, and I think that no changes can be made unless, unless the board decides to and, and the chair will direct the IT person to make those changes. I believe that's the policy coming out of the Board of Selectmen or something similar to that. But in this case, I have a motion on the floor to restore the language which I just read and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Otherwise I'm going to vote on it.
I don't know why this is presented like this. I mean, I don't understand why we don't have both.
Christine, you made your point. You made your point three or four times.
I don't have it in front of me to look at it, Ron. I don't think it's fair to ask me to vote on something that I don't have in front of me.
I'm just asking to restore what was there. That's all I'm asking. So you can say no.
That I will.
Mr. Coons on restoring the original language that was read?
I approve the rest of it.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
Ms. Foley?
No.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, I approve.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Language will be restored. Next item on the.
Ron, I would like to make a motion to continue this, that any additional changes to the planning board website have planning board approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I agree.
Ron, I'm. Would be that the, that the, the only person that directs the town administration to actually make the changes would be the chair after the vote.
I am fine with that change.
I would suggest that I'm, I'm happy to allow town planner to update with documents, meeting minutes, updates, et cetera, as necessary, but any major changes in format or content needs to go through the board, which I thought was what the project was supposed to be before, but we hadn't seen, I don't think we've reviewed a list of concerns or requested changes yet.
May I make a comment here?
Yes.
So as Ron said a little earlier, the Board of Selectmen is developing a policy around website updates in general for the, for the town. It's, it's definitely in the area of governance and communication, which is fully in our wheelhouse. And that policy is going to be taken up in two weeks. One, in our next meeting and then a final reading, meeting after that. Tonight, you folks have voted on a specific motion around a specific event. I would suggest that you not try to develop your own policy, which may or may not ultimately stand in conflict with the Board of Selectmen's policy right now. I would suggest instead that you wait to hear more from our policy and then decide about the internals of how you manage your processes after you've heard from us.
Okay.
I think that sounds fair.
Yeah, would you be willing to withdraw your motion, Christine, based on those comments?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
So Ron, I have a question.
Yes.
You talked about the text of the, of the description of the planning board on the town's website. How did the contact persons get changed? So the only names that could be clicked on to reach an email address of somebody.
Well, that was my next, you jump. I just wanted to go on to the next thing. I've also been informed that certain planning board members had their personal email accounts linked to their names on the website. At last week's Board of Selectmen meeting, this subject came up about board members having links to their personal email accounts. The result being that no board member should have a link to their accounts. If the public wants to get in touch with a board member, they can so through Helene or Sue who have town email accounts. These personal links will be removed. It's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen is reviewing the possibility of having board member obtain, board members obtaining a town email address in the future. So that's my comment on email addresses and how they, how those links came about, Gary? I don't know, but two members had their personal accounts linked. I don't know if anyone wants to speak on that.
Ron, mine has been linked since I was sworn in.
How did that happen? How did that happen?
I think when I was sworn in, I think they asked me if they wanted it.
Really? That you're the only, you're the only person and the only board member in town that has a link? So the town hasn't asked, didn't ask anybody else, just you, I guess?
Are you questioning my veracity?
I'm just questioning, you know, the logic. I'm just asking the town, ask you specifically if you'd like your, your address linked, your, your email address linked to your name. Is that what you're saying?
I am.
Okay. Anyone else have that experience?
Well, it seems Mary Foley's name is also the only other name linked and I'd, I'd like to, what, what, how, how did it used to be? Helene, was your name a button they could click on and contact, contact the planning board with?
In all honesty, I have no idea.
So I think as members have been phased out, the links have been phased out. When I first moved here, I actually contacted many people with links. There was always links. So I don't understand where the nastiness and the tone and the accusation that's coming from email links is coming from. If the town wishes not to have them there, so be it. Let them make a different I get a rule, but I mean, the tone is unacceptable, quite honestly.
Christine, this isn't about tone. To be factual, all reference to the master plan was removed from the description of the planning board in the town's website. That's factual and that's very disturbing. And it's also surprising and raises questions that there's no linkage to the chair of the planning board or the secretary of the planning board, but only to Mary Foley and Christine Delicio's email addresses on the town's website. Those are facts and it is disturbing.
There's no reason why yours couldn't be there either. Did you ask? Did they ask you? I don't understand what the issue is. Everyone's, when I joined, everyone's email was a link. I think they've just phased out over time and that's not, shouldn't be disturbing. It's just inconsistency and a lack of procedures.
I, I do think that perhaps this is something that can be clarified with council's help as well. I think there is an inherent danger in having personal emails, whether it's us or any other board, just for potential open meeting law violations. To have folks in the community contacting individual members directly, I think is not a wise decision, but everything should be funneled through town planner, secretary, chair, those sorts of things. I, I think it's inappropriate to try to manage outside communications personally, and that's probably going to happen anyway, but we shouldn't encourage it because we do run a risk of open meeting law violations when conversations begin like that.
Mr. Witten, any, any, any comments from town council?
Lorraine Iavani. May I speak?
No. Ms. Ms. Mr. Witten, any comments from town council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. I think the real issue, you know, I don't have the facts or the history of this. I think the real issue is more of a public records problem to, for the board members to think about, which is the board will routinely get requests under the public records law for documents or information, including emails sent to the board or from board members. And as a, as a board member, you really don't want your personal emails to be linked to a, a public meeting or a public records request because you'll end up having to redact thousands and thousands of emails. It's really just a major privacy headache. So I'm heartened to hear that the Board of Selectmen is considering granting board members or other boards, board members, their own individual email address, which would have Manchester.org. And so you don't have to use your personal email addresses. Yeah, I think at the end of the day, you really don't want to. And it, it's both from a optics perspective to the outside public, but more importantly, to protect the board members, you just don't want to be using personal email addresses.
Ron, may I speak? This is Becky Jakes.
Yes, Ms. Jakes.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. And, and I just wanted to say that when I was on planning board, we never used private emails. Everything went through the board secretary. So I, and for that very reason, because it just wasn't copacetic to use our own emails. Thank you, Ron.
I support that idea. In the Gloucester Planning Board, for example, they do have an email link for every single planning board member, but I would recommend that we have only Helene's or Helene and Ron's and nobody else's because that's, that's enough, particularly Helene. She would distribute everything anyhow.
Ron, can I speak? And I think as we've chatted about this before, I am a huge proponent of having Town of Manchester Planning Board or Planning Board Manchester email that everything is directed to, but we don't have that. I've asked for that. I've asked for a person, a town email, but at a bare minimum, we need a planning board email, not Helene, not Sue, a planning board email. And I think that's imperative and I don't see why we don't have one.
Okay. Any other comments on the emails?
I'd like to be recognized if I could as a member of the public, Lorraine Iavani.
We had a public session earlier in the, in the agenda. I think you missed it.
No, I've been on and I've been listening to, unfortunately, the lack of communication, but if you don't want to recognize me, that's fine. I do agree with, I do agree with Mr. Witten, though. I, exactly what I would have said. And quite frankly, he's absolutely right with the public records and there's no reason right now, if Eli is on, that those two personal emails be removed and yours with, you know, with the mass, with your Manchester official, you know, email beyond the site. It's not, it's not Ms. Foley or Mr. Delicio's responsibility. If you don't care for what's on there, remove it immediately, which it should be, as Mr. Witten has indicated. It is a big problem for discovery. And second, the, I do have to agree that I would like to see as a member of the public a little more transparency in terms of discussion, a little bit more respect for everyone on the board. And quite frankly, some of these issues, the hostility, the level of hostility, I don't understand it. I'm only a member of the public and I'm trying to understand what's going on. So, you know, even if you recognize me, well, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's, let's have a more problem solving point of view. Thank you.
We're, we're trying. Okay, next item is the election of a vice chair. You know, there's a lot of work the chair does. I'd like to have somebody that I could, you know, have, have, help me and maybe serve, you know, in my absence. So I, I think we missed this last time we, we had elections. So in that, I'd like to take nominations for a vice chair.
So I'm going to nominate Gary Gillis, I'm sorry, Gary Gilbert to be vice chair.
Okay, Mr. Gilbert. Is there a second on Mr. Gilbert?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other nominations?
I nominate Christine. I nominate Christine.
Okay, there's a nomination for Christine Delicio. Is there a second? Okay, so no second. The motion fails. I will take a vote on naming Mr. Gilbert as vice chair. Mr. Coons?
Approved.
Ms. Delicio?
I'm abstaining.
Ms. Foley?
No.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
And the chair says yes. So it's five, one, one. Okay, subcommittee and liaison updates. I turn the floor over to Mr. Olney to give us an update on the curb cut committee.
Okay, so the curb cut committee met with the DPW. I guess a week ago, Ron, I think that's right. And we had a pretty good discussion about curb cuts and the result of it was a redraft of rules and regulations as to how curb cut applications are to be reviewed and approved. And that was set out to the DPW and to the building inspector for them to look at. And we're waiting for their comments before we can then release it back to the full board for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. Policy and Procedures Committee, Ms. Delicio, any update?
We met. I've compiled a combination of some input and we'll be reviewing on Thursday.
Okay. Any other comments? I have one on the CPC. Applications are, are due by December 1st. The CPC has only received one application as of this date. It was for title research and surveying the Western Woods for $25,000. That's the only application we received so far. And a reminder to everyone that And a reminder to everyone that projects are, the deadline is December 1st. Okay. Any other?
I have a few comments on the Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing, Mr. Olney forgot. Thank you.
So Sue has pretty well covered the bases on the public housing sites. In addition to that, the Affordable Housing Trust is continuing to work with Action Inc. to provide mortgage assistance and rental assistance for people who are unemployed as a result of the pandemic. And we're also preparing an application to submit to the CPC for consideration.
Thank you. So as requested by
I have the FinCom update.
Fin, FinCom update, yep.
This is Mary. So FinCom met on November 4th. They briefly talked about capital projects. The town green is done. Repaving streets is continuing to be underway. They talked about the compost site is out to bid. Town will need to seek an additional dollars for construction oversight of this project of roughly $100,000. Black Earth will hire a contractor to do the work. And since this is town-owned land, we need to hire a project manager to oversee the project for the town. This will be a line item in the budget at town meeting. There was a long discussion on the proposed tree policy and financial impact. The town tree budget went from roughly $20,000 per year to $55,000 per year. There was some concern if this budget was enough. What happens if, when actual numbers come in higher, possibly three times higher? This budget could become a wild card, this budget item. So they were looking for a cost benefit, benefit analysis on this and exactly how many trees fall under this category. So folk tree inventory, which I think might have been started and is continuing on. They had a 40B discussion. They're looking for financial peer review for the town. Greg said he is in discussions with Mr. Whitten and probably after this coming workshop, they, they'll get a peer review, financial analysis. FinCom asked some really good questions. They wanted some comparable, comparable community projects to get some data on that. They wanted to know how other projects have gone with this developer, what were their, their historical contributions to the town? And then, you know, basically, what did similar projects actually? How, how did they actually turn out? How was the process? And they asked if Greg could talk to other towns about this, and he is looking into these items and will get back to them. There was questions about a hydrology study, concerns about enough water. Would we have to pay to tie into other towns, Beverly Salem? Mrs. Iavani spoke about a coastal report addressing the sediment in the culverts. This is a maintenance cost to the town. And they, they did some quick analysis. What is the, what is the impact to the town, financial impact? You know, that it would be a hit to the town? Is it $200,000 a year? $500,000 a year? What is that impact? They brought up that wastewater was, was a flag concern, that it's ledge and wetlands and not a lot of perpulation. We talked about the per foot construction cost, which seemed a bit light. It's at 250 a foot. With, with the actual site cost being higher than average. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any other liaison reports before we move to draft bylaws? Okay, so Sue sent out a specific format for members of the Planning Board and Mr. Orlando, Ms. Malice, to get back on specific items that we would like to cover in our next recodification meeting. So we have about five pages of specific comments that we received, and thank everybody for participating. And what I'm suggesting, instead of going through and wasting, you know, wasting a lot of time here at this late hour, is that I think the comments are specific enough that we can get through, putting them all in for discussion, brief discussion for our next recodification meeting. So that's my, that's where I'd like to go with this, rather than going through each one and saying, yes, yes, no, no, no. Some of them are simple enough that are just definitions, and some of them are just Mark Bobrowski questions that can be easily answered. So I'm sure we can knock off several of these just, just in, you know, a minute or two. So my, my thought was to just take everyone's comments and, and that, say that we're going to be, we're going to look at them. So that's what I'm proposing. If, if someone would like to go through each one and try to pare this down, I, I would also, you know, if that's the mood of the board, we can also go that, that route. Any comments or discussion? Otherwise, I'll make a motion that we incorporate, that we review all the specific comments that were given to us. Okay, I'm making a motion that we incorporate all the comments that were given to us. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Most have been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I will have more comments to add, Ron.
I think the time for more comments is, is, we set a deadline of 10 days, and I think that was what everybody adhered to. I mean, that was the amount. More time is not, not available.
Ron, more comments, excuse me, Mary. More comments could always be brought to the next meeting, which is just a different format. It's a public forum. And there's, there's time there to bring in any other comments at that point.
So a motion's been made and seconded to incorporate all the comments. I'll take a vote. Mr. Coons?
He's muted. There he is.
Good weather.
Ms. Delicio?
Are we going to have discussion? Is there a reason?
I just had, I just called for a discussion. And Ma- Mary said that, you know, we, we had a discussion. You have more discussion before, I, I mean, I'm calling for a vote.
I just don't understand why we don't have track changes. I have a really hard time looking at four documents. Is there an answer for that? There's a lot of pieces that don't, that don't have any comments. And so I, as a Planning Board member, don't feel comfortable, like honestly saying that I can review this document. I think it's really hard to review without the changes. Is there some button that you can turn on, Sue?
I mean, the motion is on whether we incorporate these comments. I don't know, we're, we're getting a little off track here. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a motion, Christine, to get, to, to accept that we're going to, we're going to review these comments in our next meeting. That's motion. Is there any? I mean, if you have a question on track changes, you could talk to Sue offline on that, in my opinion. I, I don't think, you know, I think there was enough, we got enough input. Everyone else was able to do, to, to do this. So if, if, if you're, if you're struggling with it, it should have been, should have questioned it 10 days ago, before this was due, in my opinion.
Noted, Ron, noted.
Okay, so I'm moving, we're moving on.
So do you think the public should be able to follow this document also before we go? To inform?
We're not talking about the public here. I'm talking about the recodification meeting, final meeting on these specific comments.
So I'm asking.
Later, we can discuss. We're not talking about the public right now. We're talking about this motion, and that's what we're sticking to. I'm not going off track. I'm not taking this, this board down these tracks anymore. We're going to stick to an agenda, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have motions, and we're going to vote on the motion. And if you're having problems that are, you know, track changes or something, talk them over with Sue, and, and, you know, don't waste the board's time. We're, we're moving on. We've been at this recodification for a year and a half.
I'm sorry if I was wasting your time, Ron.
Not wasting my time, you're wasting the board's time.
I'm sorry if I had a question.
I have a motion. Okay, thank you, noted.
What we're talking about here is the, is Sue Brown compiled a list of suggested additional changes, specific changes to the bylaw revisions. And we're just going to agree or not agree to, to have Mark work with them as, in, prior to having this public forum where we discuss every single aspect of all the bylaw changes. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. We're going to discuss these specific comments at our final meeting for incorporation into a final document to present for public.
Okay. So there's one more go around with our bylaw study group, and then it goes to the public forum.
Yeah, our recodification, yeah, that's, that's the intent.
This is part of a process, okay.
That's the intent. So there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to incorporate all the comments that were given to us. So I'm, I'm continuing with the vote. I have Mr. Coons' eye. Ms. Delicio, yes or no?
I just don't understand why one person got to comment, and I didn't get to comment. So I guess I'm going to abstain.
What are you talking about? What are you talking about?
I had a concern. After this process, will we see track changes? And you're getting hostile with me about wasting time.
Because I'm, I'm on a motion here. I'm not, you can talk about that, you know, you can bring up other things at the end of the meeting.
So I guess my, I'm staying.
Has nothing to do with.
I am abstaining. Thank you.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
And the board says yes. So Sue will, will be talking about these items with Mark. If Mark can answer some of these questions easily and get them off the list, that'd be great. Before our meeting, we need to set a meeting date for the next recodification. That's the next item on the agenda. Any thoughts on our meeting date? Would next Tuesday work? Or Sue, do we need to talk to Mark?
I think if you give me a date, or I can check it with him if you have a preferred date, and then we can do it via email. If that doesn't work, I can check with others on other dates or have him offer dates. But I think if you offer one, he's generally been available, so.
Would the 17th work? It's a Tuesday at like 5:00. I'm throwing that out there.
I would request it's at 6:30, so the public can attend.
Yeah, Ron, this is Gary. I'm okay with, it looks like I can make dates work over the next two weeks, but 5:00 is difficult for me to make. 6:30, no problem. 6:00, I can make, as we've been doing these meetings. But 5:00 is just difficult to get to.
So would the 17th, that's 6:30, work for everyone?
I think 6:00 is better. We get done earlier in the evening, and I think people should be able to attend those meetings. A lot of meetings start at 6:00.
So I'm throwing out the 17th at 6:00. Would that work for everyone?
I agree with that.
Okay with me.
I'm good.
All right, so Sue, do I, do we want to flow out another date for Mark, or is that enough?
Let's, I can, I'll, I'll see if he's available on that one, and if he's not, I will offer an alternative date or dates for consideration via Helene.
Okay, thank you. Schedule of our next meetings. We have one on the 23rd. Someone on the board asked if we could skip that meeting. I would say possibly. If there's nothing on our agenda, that's earth, earth-shattering, but I'll throw that out to the board on skipping meetings. I could, I can look at what's on the coming, upcoming agenda and send.
Ron? Yes, you can. You do have, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Mr. Macri, Macri Marshall at 30 University. We'll have to, we'll just have to get them to continue from the 23rd to the next set meeting. So that's.
That's the driveway?
Yeah, and, and he was going to get a, an engineer.
Yeah.
So we'll just get in touch with him and ask him to come, to send a note, to send an official letter saying that he will come on December 14. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me, unless, you know, unless there's other things that come in. Otherwise, it is close to the holiday, and you know, if we can, you know, skip out, that'd be great. Planning Board's been working hard, got a lot on our plate. So then, after December 14th, I'm thinking January 11th would be the next date in our cycle. So again, through the holidays and that's where I think our, our meetings will fall, so.
The only thing with January 11th, I, I don't have the next year's calendar. Is that Martin Luther King Day?
I don't know. That's a good question.
No, it's not. MLK Day is on the 18th. Oh, great, perfect.
Okay, thanks. Now, any?
Twenty-three canceled or no? Just wait and see?
Let's wait, let's wait on that. Don't, don't, don't give up the time slot yet.
Okay.
So any other matters that are not, that some board member would like to bring up? Now is the time.
Oh, Ron, I have one. I'd like to ask. What? I'd like to ask the board if they would support, perhaps taking a vote or support the letter, the statement I read as part of our comments on the 40B, the architecture of it. Would the board support me sending those to the Board of Selectmen to somehow get to, to the proponent of the 40B project prior to their next meeting, which I guess is in just a couple of days? But I think it's good to get these ideas of them rethinking, this encouragement to get them to rethink their basic design parties as soon as possible, the earlier the better. It wasn't that specific a document, but it, well, perhaps you recall what I said, but is that something we want to, we want to send to them? I think the earlier the better.
So is the board aware of, any questions from the board as to what this contains?
Ron, it was my thinking that the board wasn't in agreement on it. That's why it didn't go forward.
I don't think it didn't go forward. It was just something I read into the record as part of the discussion that night. There was no votes taken. It was just part of the discussion.
It, it concerned the specific architecture of the structures?
Right.
And?
I can send it as an independent letter just from an individual, but I, I think the town needs to start giving some architectural feedback to these people.
I would have to see, I would have to see it in written form before I would vote on it.
That's reasonable. I can send it to Helene to send out.
Why don't we do that? And then, well, might not, might not get sent out to the 14th of December.
On a bigger note, Sue, are we going to be making a bigger official statement, letter? I mean, you, you developed these little synopsis of our comments from our discussion. I guess, is that what you're sending out? And when do we get our next chance to make? I mean, their design has not progressed very much. We all need to be aware of that. It's very, very nascent. And there's a lot of specifics we can't even comment on yet. But where is that at in the process?
So I think if Eli's still on the phone, he can talk more about process. It doesn't, it doesn't stop now. I think it's, it might be a good idea for folks to check in or log into the Board of Selectmen's workshop. It's, I don't know how much input they're going to be taking at it, but you can at least hear their thought process of the types of things that they would like to negotiate with or things that might be on the table for negotiation with the developer. I know that the developer had said at the previous meeting that they were open to some advice on the architectural component. So I think it's in line with what they're thinking. I think they would expect something from the town. But if, I don't know if, if Eli is still on or if. But if I don't know if Eli is still on or if if Becky or someone else wants to speak as to the process. I I mean, it's an open. It's going to be iterative. So I don't know if there's a particular call will go out or if it's just kind of iterative now. So I'd let someone else respond to that. Including John, if he, Mr. Witten, if he knows what that is.
Sue, I'm not sure when you say it, you mean the the timing of?
Yes, the timing of further further comments specifically from a board's comments.
Well, I I think, you know, and again, I'm saying this without any any approval from the Board of Selectmen on this. So it's just my opinion. I I think the Board of Selectmen collects as many comments as they can in terms of what the respective boards think should be included in kind the the negotiations that the Board of Selectmen are going to have with the applicant. The wish list, so to speak. And so that that door to me is always open until really literally the last minute. Some of the board's wish lists might be dependent upon a third party study. So the the board may not know, for example, stormwater impacts. So it may be that the board can't articulate a wish list until after the studies are completed. So then the studies become the wish list. And that's typically what happens in a lip approval process. The BOS is comfortable that they were asking for the right things because they have sufficient information to to make the ask. At this point in time, I'm not sure the BOS has that. And then just one more comment. Generally, in the lip process or any 40B, the applicant has at at best preliminary plans. Rarely do we see details. So the the town rarely wants to rely on those preliminary plans in articulating the wish list because those plans are so rough and not ready for prime time.
Rather than rather than having Gary send a letter, would it make sense to instead ask that the town be able to hire a peer review architect to work with the developer to design the project in accordance with the town's sense of design?
Yeah, and and Mr. Chairman, if I could just if I could just add, I agree with that completely, Mr. Only. I I think that is really the the process I'm I'm referring to is you. You don't know what you don't know until that information is gathered for a lot of things, not for everything. And certainly architectural design or landscape design or infrastructure improvements really require that kind of baseline report first. And and then the board can discuss what it wants to do based on that report. So yes, I I think that's absolutely right.
Um, I'd like to weigh in on this. The I asked, I think I spoke to Eli about this. Compiling a list of what consultants is the town thinking of hiring? Can they can they start to make a draft list of the different types of peer review consultants? And is there room slash budget for an architectural one? Certainly, you need hydrology and you need you need civil engineers. You need a whole team of different people to look at different things. It'll be the zoning board of appeals and the selectmen. The two bodies will be hiring perhaps different peer reviewers, if I understand this correctly. And I think the jury's out whether there's room or budget for an architectural one, although I do already suggested a firm that does architectural 40Bs. So the possibility is out there, but I guess is that correct, John, that the the selectmen and the zoning board are the two that will be compiling a list of which peer reviewers to hire?
It it is, Gary. I I'd say this, though, the the I think the process really should be separated because the the select board's list is from 1,000 miles high for many of the areas. The ZBA's list will be much more in the weeds, much more micro and plan specific. So because the Board of Selectmen are not being asked to vet the project per se, but their endorsement is being requested. They don't need the same granular level of detail that the ZBA is going to need. I'm not saying they couldn't. I'm just saying generally to separate these two. So the the Board of Selectmen's list is is generally going to be broader and more superficial, whereas the ZBA's list is going to be more in the weeds. And while there will be overlap, there may be some some big differences. The budget at this stage is really the Board of Selectmen's negotiation with the applicant. At the ZBA stage, it becomes critical because the ZBA is going to be charging the applicant money using 53G funds. And those are all going to be added up, which will work against the town on the economics of the project. Because the entirety of the process is measured by the board cannot render the project uneconomic. The Board of Selectmen do not have that same limitation because they're being requested to grant their endorsement to support the project. The ZBA has to be more careful and more circumspect about spending the developers' money. I'm not saying that with any any timidity. It's just that the Board of Appeals has to keep a running tally because it's all going to be used against the town in terms of density or project offsets. The Board of Selectmen don't have that same limitation. So they're really separate processes. And just one more comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman. It's entirely possible. I mean, I don't think we want this outcome. It's entirely possible that the Board of Selectmen's negotiation with the applicant falls apart. I mean, we just have to assume that's a possibility. So it's really even more important to separate these two, these two defined moments. Board of Selectmen get enough data to know what they need to to impose as conditions for their endorsement. And then the next chapter is the formal application to the Board of Appeals, which is very granular and very, very site specific.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Witten. So Gary, I guess. Do you want to still continue? Or do you think maybe we wait till the peer review and architecture?
I could send my own letter independently as an individual. I think it would be nice if the planning board weighed in and it was supported by the planning board, so.
All right. Well, why don't you send your documentation? We'll review it and then we'll see what, you know, see the opinion of the board.
There's there's time for all that. Yeah.
Okay. Any other thing, Mr. Lucio? Did you want to comment on track changes? Now would be the time.
Thank you, Ron. Yes, I would. I guess when we present this document to the public, I was hoping for some more track changes. I've heard some comments. I've heard people having a hard time following it. So if that's possible, I would like to request that in advance to give people some time to work on it.
Okay. Sue, could we make that happen? Is that something Mark's been tracking or?
I think.
I thought it was, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Well, we he had he had laid out his intention on how to create a document that he thought works well in a public forum. And it was not a tracked. It was not a full track changes. I think he's his experience and having done this over 100 times is that is more confusing way to do it. It's possible that there could be a track change document that could be used for members of the board who want to look at it that way. But I'm I'm happy to have the discussion with him about the best way in his opinion to present it to the general public. I think track changes, things are moved around. You won't know if they're moved or if they're deleted. I think a typical track changes would be very difficult for the public to wade through. So I've been deferring to Mark's recommendation on how best to present it to the public, given that he's done this 100 times. So.
I understand that, but I think certain people, the public can handle the track changes. And I understand that maybe that's not the document that you present in a public forum. But I think when people ask for them, and it actually would be very helpful for me because when I looked at the last document to this document, I just I look at a screen all day and I don't have the ink or the capacity to look through, you know, 400 page documents side by side. And I I get frustrated myself looking at it and not seeing the wording that things changed and what was inserted. And we also talked in the beginning of this to have synopses of like major sections that changed and why. And I haven't seen that yet. So.
Christine, I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, but I think what might be better, because this is such a big document, is he sent us a major changes table of contents on October 22nd, which was sort of a guide. I think if that was expanded, where they basically are saying each section, this was added, this was dropped, or this is the important point. If it was expanded, I think it would serve the same purpose and be a lot easier. It'd be like a user's guide to the whole thing.
Understood. But then when you look at the back of the regular zoning regulations, we have a date that it was changed and what it changed from. Like, there is a little bit. So I think we need to be observant of that. And I think we should come up with some kind of a draft. So yes, expand upon it. But we need.
On a table of content, sort of a guidebook to the revised thing, knowing that the a true track changes document would get a lot of people blurred out. And if it was done well, it might be very successful.
I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, I think we are. I think we need a good, clean.
Offering the track changes is fine if people want it. God bless them.
Ron, I have a couple of comments. This is.
Yes, Mary. Are we all done, Christine? I think we're we're all talking the same thing and then I'll comment.
So a track change is coming forthcoming?
She's going to consult with Mark, I assume.
I didn't know if Sue, you have the capacity or just to click a button and change it. And the other thing was we've talked about a planning board email for a while. So can we get some resolution? Can we look into that and have some kind of follow up by the next planning board meeting?
I guess what I'm hearing is that the Board of Selectmen is looking into that. So whatever they decide, I'm happy to to communicate that when they make a decision.
Yeah, I think Becky's on board and I think Becky knows who's got the message and I'm sure she'll report it in her liaison report back to the.
Can can we rewind a second to Christine's comment? Christine, are you supporting also that someone spend the time and effort to make a more thorough major changes table of contents document also?
Well, I think in the back of our zoning bylaws, we have the date that it was changed and explanation why it was changed. I think we need that going forward.
Have you read the major change, the table of contents that we were sent?
I have. I don't think there's an explanation in all of it. I just.
No, right.
I don't think saying something is illegal or it's unworded is a reason why. I think we need some more history behind it. And what we spent a year and a half talking about needs to reflect a little bit more of what we've done.
Well, no, that's a separate subject too, giving the reasons why I wouldn't necessarily support.
Why?
It will become a book. Not necessary. We do need to clarify what changes were made. I think that's for sure.
I think a sentence or two that says this was changed because it was illegal. And here's the case law. There's the three court decisions.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
I think that's I think that's fine. It's three sentences per change or something. Not a big deal. I think that makes sense.
Okay, duly noted. I'll move on to Mary.
Thank you. So I will just jump on that subject and then move on to my other ones. But I agree with what's being said. I hope I'm not saying it just in a different way, but I have printed out the list of markup, which is a basic project management tool out of Word. The problem with that in this current draft does not reflect all of the changes that occurred. So I don't know if things were being accepted at different points and then they got out of the tracking system. I don't know, but you can't use that as an accurate report. So we do need a separate document that is a document of change. So we can see that parking space dimension size was changed, that sentences were added in that that are not in this list of markup document. So that's definitely for a a working piece for the planning board. And I think what's presented to the public is more along the lines of this is what changed and this is why it changed. And they can all work in tandem. The other things is I was just going to recommend, I know we had discussed it, but we've never actually done it. But the end of each meeting, we we talk about what we would like on next week, the next meeting's agenda. Is that still the process, Ron, or has that changed also?
Oh, you can mention things. You know, if the board has a desire to discuss them, we can put them on. If it's I would say the majority rules in this case. You know, if it's if it's a personal item and many of the board members don't wish to discuss it, I'm not going to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so I just some suggestions I have is maybe we have a 40B agenda item that when things come up, whether it's architecture or whatever else, we can discuss that on an ongoing basis. I would think same with the recodification until that is done. And I know that it's budget season, so we should start talking about the planning board's budget.
You know, putting on, you know, these general items on the agenda opens things up to very long meetings. I think the recodification, first off, the selectmen will be bringing, getting us involved in the 40B, I think, along the line when when they're looking for our opinion. Again, we're more advisory than really substance in this case. On the recodification, we've been having meetings. And yes, maybe if some questions come up after this final one, we should maybe discuss it at our next recodification, next regular meeting, if it's a item that the board is really, you know, determined to discuss. So that would be my opinion. I would welcome anybody else feeling that we need to put these on the agenda every week, every couple of weeks.
Ron, this is Gary Russell.
Yes, Gary.
Yeah, I I think that we should talk about things when members feel it's necessary. I thought actually the using the planner's update as sort of a guide of of what topics are out there worked for me. Okay.
And if if something's not on the update, we we should definitely talk about it. It's not have doesn't have to be on Sue's list. Any other comments from the board? Okay.
Ron?
Yes.
This is Sue. I just want to reiterate. I I only provide my update once a month, so my left out on the other on the other dates. And I intentionally don't put things on it that you're that the board is already intimately involved with. So the recodification, I don't usually, I don't update you on that because you're central to that. So if there are thing, so recodification or other things that you're intimately involved with, I wouldn't show up on mine. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, sorry. I wouldn't want you to do that every every meet. I apologize. It just.
Wouldn't be enough change.
Pretty well for me tonight.
Okay.
Okay, guys. Any other motions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Second. Okay, a motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Lucio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
See you next week, 17th, unless otherwise noted.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, guys.